Weight lifted.
Alrighty, good morning Commissioners and over to you, Harrington.
Well, thank you Clerk Moss and welcome to the Washington County Board of Commissioners Thursday, December 5th, 2024 Roundtable. We started our morning with an event for Washington County legislators over at the Walnut Street Building to help them be better informed about the needs here in Washington County in service to our shared constituents. On behalf of the board, I would like to give a big shout out to all of the staff members who helped put that together from multiple departments, very effectively done. Commissioner Fai was able to join us for that, but she is excused for as much of the remainder of the day as she needs. This is Chair Catherine Harrington, I'm joined by Commissioner Roy Rogers, Commissioner Pam Therese and Commissioner Willie. For a change, I didn't get your name wrong, Commissioner Willie. Didn't grant you a different last name, which I have habit to do. Okay, so we're trying to, as usual, cram a lot of business into one day. So this afternoon, we have a two-hour training. So this morning, while we have our new roundtable planning sheet in the packet and rolling agenda, we will not be touching on those. I do want to reinforce heads up, January 9th, we're starting your lunch period as you supported previously. Will only be a half an hour, so please come prepared because we will reconvene at 12:30 because we have a lot to cover. We have the supplemental roundtable with our federal lobby team on January 9th. In February, we changed the date of the roundtable to accommodate various needs. It will now be on Thursday, February 13th. Yes, we will likely have a roundtable in March, but as you know, if we don't need it, I'll cancel it. April, we're proactively cancelling. May, we don't usually have one because it's budget season. And then we'll have a roundtable in June and then we're not planning roundtables for the remainder of the year. We'll see how things frame up. So without further ado, we're going to turn it over to Ms Angie to continue our budget planning and knowledge. So, thank you.
So this session actually continues our roundtable planning, John, if you could slide for me, next slide, please.
Need to point it?
Sometimes the first presentation, it needs to warm up a little bit. So today's schedule is we will review the upcoming roundtable schedule with the fiscal forecast, review the state economic forecast, discuss general fund forecast, including finalizing 26 budget principles and priorities. I would refer to the email as well as the publicly posted packet, which includes a working draft. I want to underscore working draft because this is the first time your board has seen that document. And then solid-
Incorporating our feedback and yours from last meeting.
Yep, from last meeting and building off of last year's principles and priorities. And then today, with a desire to solidify the budget direction to the county administrator. Next slide. Which will then take us, and this is a look back as well as a look ahead to the January 9th meeting, which your board will affirm the budget principles and priorities and budget direction. Next slide, and at this time, I will turn it over to John Steyer, who is our interim CFO.
Right, thank you, Ms Angie. So as I am learning a lot of things in this role, this is one of them, the state economic forecast. And so I have looked through the latest Oregon economic revenue forecast that was published in December. And then I know the governor also produced her budget on the first, which I haven't got in detail, but I did pull two slides out for information just to talk about the economic forecast. And I'm happy for any questions you have that I can further research if needed. But I just covered this table quickly. So this is from left to right, the first table is the 2023 close of session numbers. And then the September forecast and then the changes in December forecast. All those numbers are going up, which is good. As you look at the rows, we have the structural revenues, personal income tax, corporate and other revenues. I had to note that other revenues and then minus offsets, which include transfer actions. And the tiny footnote is corporate tax transfers, rainy day fund and Department of Ag transfer. And the bottom line, their numbers are the competence intervals, which, you know, from three to six percent is a little bit of change. But the projections are looking, looking good. So the 2023-25 biennium improved 947 million compared to the prior forecast, primarily due to income tax increases and corporate income tax also increased from prior projections. The total increase since the close of session forecast is 2.8 billion. Increased revenues in the current biennium also increased the projected kickers. The protected kicker now stands at 1.8 billion. And that will be returned taxpayers as credit to their 25 tax return. Corporate kicker now stands at about 1 billion and that will be retained in the general fund and spent on education and in the next biennium. So overall, general fund resources are increased by 2.2 billion to total 37.8 billion.
And there are lots of needs in the state.
There are lots of needs in the state.
If I could comment to-
Yes, please.
Because we said in an SHS meeting on Tuesday and they are predicting reduction in income tax collections for the SHS platform, which would also be a direct relationship to tax collections overall. And they're citing some gloom and doom in a number of our industries. And so how the state, I'm not asking, I'm not asking you, okay? So how the state came up with this in a more positive fashion is contrasting, but it would be interesting to see how those two match up.
Well.
So, so Metro is not forecasting gloom and doom. Andrew Hohn from Portland Metro Chamber.
SHS numbers are-
No, SHS numbers are not gloom and doom. This is the fourth year of a new personal income tax that we learned with the adjusted forecast last year is affected by the personal decisions on capital gains and other personal financial actions. A small number of individuals and their personal decisions affect this regional income tax. The state having a much larger population, that level of change levels out, which is why we don't see gloom and doom in the state forecast. So other national forecasts, if we go to your next slide, also reflect that the, actually that remote may not be on yet on the side. Nationally, we continue to be in the state, whoops, we've got to go back now. We continue to be in a healthy state across the nation. And there were some after the national election that were painting a big picture of uncertainty. Economics is one of my hobbies. And last night, there was a great piece on Fresh Air with an economist of note. And he was really accentuating the difference between President-elect Trump's negotiating style as opposed to actions. So a very distinct difference as well. And this is something that we'll be coming back to at our January roundtable. So to underscore the point, the executive director of Portland Metro Chamber is the one that is painting the picture of gloom and doom, which is his right in his role. But we do not see facts from any other source, including at the state level, that is reinforcing that message. Take it away.
Very good. I think you've covered the points on this slide, actually. You know, basically, the economy is on track and is normalizing. Trying to get to low inflation, it's not quite there yet, but we're getting there. There is consensus that we'll have a real GDP growth of about 2.7%. And I think as the time of the writing, they were actually projecting it might be 2.6, some variation. For me, I mean, I think for everyone, probably the biggest unknown is what will happen with what you've talked about after the elections and the policies going forward. Mainly based on expansion of tariffs, more restricted immigration policies, act reforms, cuts of deregulation, some of the things ever picked out. But I think we'll have a better view of that in the next update from the state.
Could you remind me when that next update is due? Yeah.
I thought they were quarterly, but I don't know that for sure. So this was December, we had one in September, so I would think it would be a quarterly.
Yeah, we'll follow up with the order done.
Yeah, it sounds like it'll probably be during the session. So the governor has issued her proposed budget. There were, are two different great articles in the Oregonian about this FY 26 through 28 biennium. So no transportation money for local governments. That hurts us because 50, 30, 20, then we don't get the money for road maintenance, which is key. Housing, she's proposing $880 million of bonding, 780 million for affordable housing, including subsidizing owner occupied homes as well as of that 100 million directed towards infrastructure for sewer water, transportation and other which it helps local cities and service districts. Homelessness, 700 million, 218 million for Oregon shelters, 188 million to transition people out of homelessness, 173 million for prevention. That's that eviction prevention we're very familiar with, with a rehousing theme. 105 million of that for long-term rent assistance, 3.5 million for housing people with behavioral health needs and then 13 million for the tribes to address homelessness. In addition, mental health treatment beds, 90 million to yield 336 new beds, 53, 50 million of that for mental health workforce, 130 million for mental health treatment, a rate increase, 40 million for deflection, we need to compete for that, and 15 million for medically assisted treatment of incarcerated individuals. And then it goes into budgets for youth as well as education, which isn't the center of, it doesn't quite overlap with our wheelhouse. So, but this is the governor's budget versus the budget that the legislators pass. So there's, there's work to do there, but some key investments to, to the goals that she wants us as a county to help support. So thank you for summarizing all of this so that, because we had a lot of questions after the September forecast and how do we get our heads around that? So, it's really-
Thank you. I'm interested to see how all that trickles down to the county and how the county can, I guess through government relations influence that. I did want to cover just the last two bullets on here. So, you know, the economy is demonstrating moderate health and output growth is lagging the national statistics, but showing signs of acceleration. And then on job creation remains positive, but the note in the report was as concerning to see job creation concentrated in just a few industry categories. And as I look back at the tables, you know, health and education are growing, government's growing, the private sector is decreasing. And so I don't know what that means for the county, but that's as far as growth, you know, Washington County is one of the largest populated counties, we should want that private sector to grow as well. So, okay, so I'm learning and if you have questions on this, I can research, learn some more, so thanks.
When you present to the public what might be helpful is why does this matter to the county?
Well, that's, that's what I, that's what I was trying to ask as I was reading this, but I don't know the connections yet.
It seems like how I would equate it and that's, I'm not in the same position. I always look at the, not macro but micro, is that if state has less healthy reserves or funding, we can't ask them for a whole lot because you're not going to have it. And so I think certainly that's the issue. And I, and I also don't know what the impact of the assumptions are on the Trump era tax cuts. Because if they expire, then there'll be a little, little different amount of taxes coming in. They renew or accelerate, then there'll be less revenue. So anyway, I just ask, I mean, you're the expert, but I've been looking at it and saying, well, exactly how are we using that data?
Right, those are the questions I'll be asking as I-
We hope you'll be with us for the January 16th roundtable with Van Skoyek, our federal lobbyist, who will be painting a clear picture on what Congress has ahead of itself with regard to the federal budget, which then passes money on not only to the state, but to us as counties as well. So we're all related.
And these issues, obviously, were in early November, I think was when that came out, right? My other concern is what we're reading in the newspapers about Intel and the changes there.
Right.
What, what impact that may or may not have on our local economy.
Yeah.
That's, and I'm, no, I'm not alone in watching.
I think I saw like Wells Fargo was in a lot of jobs as well too recently now, so yeah.
That as well.
Right.
Yep, their call center on Walker Road.
Right.
Now we're going to take a look back at Washington County and where we've been over the last four years of the significant work that has occurred under your board's leadership. So let's first take a look at where we were with the actions taken in 2021 and 2022. And within each of the budgets, I'm going to speak to the high-level actions. Not going to go through a full budget presentation on each of the years, but just kind of a reminder of where we've been. Each of these years have been with a focus of long-term financial sustainability. And your board has understood over each of these years that it will not be achieved in just one year. It will come over time and as well as we've had layered impacts over those discoveries and also the continued changes in state legislation, which includes unfunded, underfunded mandates. So looking back at 21, 22, some of the actions, departments were asked to submit 2% reductions and we considered unavoidable cost increases. So maintained existing contracts, obligated expenditures. We were using at that point the CARES funds, at that point in time, we were focused on COVID. It was COVID response and that was the focus. And so there were $6 million of freed up general fund resources, which we were able to be able to reallocate. We did use 6 million in one-time increase in SIP transfer. I want to underscore a one-time action. There were minimal new staff positions and then very, very small increases to materials and services, which really matched inflation costs. Then we moved into 22, 23. As we continued to learn about the structural imbalance of our budget, there was a 31.1 million dollar gap. We minimized the use of one-time funds for ongoing operations. And I want to say minimize because that, that is something that we've continued to put into practice here at Washington County. Denied new position request postponed, facilities and IT capital funding froze, several vacant positions. And there were cuts to fleet replacement vehicle contributions. This morning, as part of the legislative convening, there was a discussion at one of the tour stops within the fleet operations area. We were able to cut or delay vehicles at that point in time because of the significant supply chain issues we were experiencing. There just weren't the vehicles to replace that fiscal year. Then, I don't know what happened to the G from general fund.
Well, it's missing rightsizing, the title got really cut off.
About that?
So it should read recent history of general fund rightsizing.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So then we move into 23, 24. And this was the first time in Washington County's history that we had started to use scenarios as far as our budget balancing. The learnings of the prior two years is not all services are the same. And so across the board cuts frankly don't work because we have different service, different service provisions and requirements across Washington County. So departments were asked to submit for 7 and 10% reductions. Some of the balancing actions were no COLA for department and county administrative office leadership and limited COLA for 3.5 for all non-represented employees. I will say that was a one-time action. And as your board has discussed, we do need to make sure that we are continuing to meet market so that we can retain and attract employees as we move forward. We also need to be thoughtful about compression. I am looking forward to the work that HR is undertaking due to your one-time budget allocation in this current fiscal year of a class and comp study. HR is currently, as was outlined in your last quarterly report, on the issuance of the RFP for those services. We did look at a 5% reduction target in health insurance cost. We managed future vacancies to a $4 million savings for members of the public. It was really looking and holding vacant positions longer for a period of time. And then we eliminated 22 currently vacant positions. We also had a 7% reduction in the general fund transfer to Mistip and WCCLS. Then moving to this current fiscal year, we found ourselves with a $10 million gap going into budget development. So the scenarios used were flat, 3% and 5%. I will say even with the flat scenarios, given just general cost escalation, that's still a reduction in budgets even with a flat budget. So some of the balancing acts at that point in time were eliminating or temporarily freezing some of the general fund supported positions, a 5% reduction in the general fund transfer of Mistip and a 7% reduction in WCCLS. I see there's two Ws there, so I'm just mentioning that typo. The reason there was a difference in the percentage of transfers is Lisa Tattersall with CAO had really looked and analyzed their reserves, their fund balance. And so we were able to utilize some of the fund balance to get to that 7%. We also use SIP funds for facilities, capital and limited duration support for the housing production opportunity fund. I want to underscore, those are capital expenditures and those are one-time. That is very different than funding personnel with the use of reserves. By funding personnel with the use of reserves, you have a compounding impact the following budget years. So we are making progress to financial stability. And I really want to credit your board for the journey that we have been on. And as county administrator, I personally and on behalf of the organization want to just appreciate the partnership in this and also the learning journey that we, we have been on and that you've committed yourselves on as individuals. Some of the things that we collectively are just faced with is operating in the constrained property tax environment that we're in. We continue, we inherited and then have new state and federal unfunded, underfunded mandates. We are aligning our ongoing operations and ongoing revenue. I'm connecting that to my last point of last year as well as the previous years. We cannot use one-time dollars for ongoing operations without making note of that action. And then also reducing rightsizing strategically because not one size fits all. This is a large organization with a wide portfolio of services. And then continuing to have an eye on achieving appropriate reserves. John, Mr Steyer had just outlined the state economic forecast. We are still in some unprecedented times. We have changes in our local economy with changes, for example, that are unknown. Commissioner Therese, you brought up Intel. I will just note Multnomah County is facing a $20 million shortfall within their general fund. And that is due to primarily assessed valuation within the county. So by all means, this is challenging work for your board, for staff and for community partners. But I do feel that we are on the right path, it is the right path, but we're not at the end. And so we are making progress as still, I want to acknowledge is challenging and hard as this is. So this slide, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time here because we've already reviewed it. The one change I want to highlight and it's bolded, we have increased the health insurance anticipation from 10% to 12.5. So our health insurance contracts are on an annual basis. Our budget is on a fiscal year. So for this calendar year, we have a 10% increase. In the fall of each year, we're able to look at our experience rating and to be able to determine where do we, what's our crystal ball looking like? There is, no way, I will just say that we can maintain a 10% without significant, significant plan changes. So what staff are proposing in the change of the fiscal forecast is increasing that from 10% to 12.5%. So that reflects in the last six months of next fiscal year, it would be anticipating a 15% increase in health insurance. That may still be conservative, but that is a good baseline for staff to go into negotiations with our carriers.
Can I just say, on this slide, I have found in talking to folks that on the fourth sub-bullet under assumptions that reads includes addition of 2005 SIP to property tax, it, it has helped to explain it in terms of the roles, the property tax roles. Because we're going from that SIP fee over to the property tax roles.
Okay, we can make that clarification.
Yeah, because it's not changing the proper tax, getting it into that scheme, that's all, just a little feedback.
Yeah, Commissioner Willie.
I'd like to know the cost of the health insurance going to 12.5. I'd like to know a little bit more about what that looks like and how we begin to communicate that only so many additional things we can modify to personnel costs such as paying the additional PERS. So what's the cost of paying the additional PERS versus, versus, it's not a percent, it's dollar numbers that I'm looking for, dollar number of that 6% versus the, the dollar numbers and the benefits that we would have to reduce because we continue to add personnel costs at the expense of programs and services. And I realize that we need to do this to keep our employment attractive and certainly not to be negative, I guess, about that. But at the same time, I just need to know what I'm giving up by doing those things.
So we can follow up with further information on what our in totality is per fund, health insurance, COLAs, PERS pickup as a, as a follow-up, what, what we're anticipating based on current agreements and estimations of health insurance. Because I think what you're asking Commissioner Willie is for the fiscal numbers. Because I think what you're asking Commissioner Willie is for the fiscal numbers.
Yeah, and I don't expect you to have that right off the top of your head. I mean, that's just kind of, again, I'm looking at everything that costs us money and what, what we have to sacrifice for that. And I didn't understand, the next slide, that kind of addresses that a little bit, I think. I didn't understand this slide at all, so when we get there, you could explain that, so. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I do. My mind always goes to the future and saying, okay, how are you sustainable? And you know you're spending, forgetting the reserves because I mean, you just have to have those. And I don't put that in my mind as spendable revenue. But if you're taking in 293 million and you're spending 312 million, if you're just balancing budget, you know you're behind. So if you were quickly forecasting 26, 27, because a lot of jurisdictions will go out three or four years so they can kind of see the pattern. It's just trying to correct one year at a time because it gets, it gets harder if you don't start having a plan to get there. With the same pattern, and I know you're not going to know numbers, but with the same pattern persistent 26, 7?
So, so last month, and it's not in this slide deck, we did show the five-year, the one graph of the fiscal forecast. Due to just frankly, the need for us to have some longer range fiscal planning and just the needs of our finance department underpin all the operations of the county. We are looking at using some of our salary savings and going out to our PRFQ for some financial services. And having some consultant support helps support us in developing some of those more detailed kind of models and assumptions, Commissioner Rogers, so that we can look at, look at what we're, what we're looking at in the future. As I shared last year, the challenge that we're under, measure five, measure 50. And let's just say there's no growth in construction, so 3%. And the majority of our general fund is personnel. I don't know any private, non-private, who's, who can keep that cost at 3%. So I think that's where we need some outside consultant support to help us build some models and some of, some of those assumptions moving forward too.
What I was looking for, it's not the particulars, because I know you don't have them and I appreciate where you're going. But is a fair assumption for the board to say that in 26, 27, and not even going further than that, that you're going to be faced with a very similar scenario as you're seeing in 25, 6? Just generally.
I, I will answer that, but we need to right-size the expenditures of this organization to our revenues. And that does mean, and I'm kind of going, hopping ahead a few slides now, that does mean we truly have to look at the services and programs that we're delivering and that means we need to stop doing things.
I understand you're right. I think an easy answer would be say, and I don't want to belabor this, but in 26, 27, with the same kind of look, you're going to be in the same situation in 26, 27.
I think, I think we're aware of that from the standpoint of what our growth has slowed dramatically. Inflation doesn't seem to be coming down as quickly as we might hope and we have the limitations in place. So, you know, I, there isn't, there isn't any change in those, in those things into the future. I will say I appreciated the comment this morning at the legislative breakfast about the property tax situation and the fact that we need to be addressing that at the legislative level as well. So, you know, we're not there yet, but that's the first time I've heard us really bring that to the forefront in a legislative setting.
Okay, so this is a slide that the board had seen at the last roundtable. So really, this is just a different look at what was presented within the table in the last slide. So what this shows is of our gap, 48% is due to general cost escalation, personnel cost. And that is 9.9 million of that change, I want to highlight again. The change between last month and this month is we changed health insurance from 10% to 12.5%. And then due to the SIP, Intel SIP expiration and the SIP rolling on to the property tax rolls, that accounts to 52% of the gap that we have to close. Commissioner Willie.
Can I ask a question back on this? So there's been much discussion particularly with Metro around the SHS conversation about the difference between the fact that when we budget, we, all governments utilize the a COLA of some kind. And here you've represented the CPIW, right? So generally, that's in the 3, 3 plus or minus 1 or 2%. But what it really affected our costs as it shows up on SHS, but also across all of our operations, is that health insurance cost, the state required PERS increases. And, and then new for us, this budget is applying PERS pickup across the range of employees. So that's what in some total leads us to having a cost increase for delivering the services aside from that, which is a point that I, it's a point of frustration for me because Metro rightfully explains that we're all using standard cost of living increases. And so, but, so why are the counties claiming that costs are higher than that? And they're not telling the story that is a complete story of these cost impacts in order to deliver the services. They're only using the CPI. Yep, yep. Which is a little frustrating because with the SHS forecast of a year ago, they continued to use a 4%, which was a bit more reflective. And now they're consistently saying at most 3%. But once again, that's a subset of the cost story.
They're just trying to back into a number. 3% worked a lot better.
I'm just trying to stick with the facts versus motivations. I don't disagree with you, Commissioner Willie.
Any other questions on this slide? So attached in your packet is a document and the same principles and priorities are on this slide. What you see in blue is newer modified language from last year's. Also in your packet is the 24, 25, and sorry, sometimes I have to think of years before I speak, fiscal years. Budget principles and priorities that your board adopted as part of your adopted budget. So let me just kind of walk through these verbally. So number one on the principles, support board goals and governance. Enhance meaningful communication with the public that is transparent and open. Enhance and evaluate law, revenue and long-term fiscal sustainability. What is modified language from last year is around equity. It is honor the continued commitment towards equity. Objectively evaluate services with a priority on mandated services. Consider both long-term capital and operating needs. Same as last year, position the organization for the future. What's modified, understand service impacts on community members' lives. Continuing is balance systems of service and continue to pursue a one-Washington County approach. So those are with staff, executive level leadership input, recommended changes to the principles. And I'll turn it over to your board for discussion.
I will just, if I could just start us off. After our last roundtable, I went back to my notes in the updated presentation. And I'll say for myself, I was really struggling with how would I imagine our budget restructuring going with this budget year, given the principles? And so I spent time with the budget, going through each of the departments and trying to internalize what the hard choices might be that we'll have to make. And then I caught up with this packet and hearing it articulated. Having gone through that exercise, I can really feel how there is a lot of meaning behind these budget principles. So I just wanted to lay that out because Ms. Angie saw me the very end of the day yesterday and I was still struggling. And so last night I sat down with this information again with my notes. And I was like, okay, the light bulb's starting to go off now. So not that it won't be difficult ahead, don't get me wrong, because we, we all endeavored to serve our community as, as well as our passions and our dedication demand of us. But we, we can't do it all. In fact, we have to do less. And those are wicked hard choices.
I'm struggling a little bit. Maybe I'm where you used to be. And that is with, just last night, with the bullet objectively evaluate services with a priority on mandated services. You know, and I guess what I'm struggling with is I don't know how I will objectively evaluate those services. So I think that's, you know, I'm worried about that. And, and while I think it's good to have it as a principle, again, as Catherine mentioned, as Chair mentioned earlier, I, I'm struggling with how I'm going to do that in real time because the evaluation process goes to values, goes to other pieces as well, that may not be as objective as I, I'd hope.
So a couple thoughts, I think it's important to remember that that bullet doesn't stand alone. It is in the context of the whole. In addition, your budget principles and priorities is what you as a board are saying, county administrator, go work with the departments, members of the organization at all levels to bring back a proposed budget. So that means we have to objectively evaluate. And that means sometimes we need, as individuals, employees set aside where our passions are and really objectively look at our services with that priority on mandated services. What are we required to do? And the struggle that you're feeling is real. And I, I know it's, it's the real feeling that staff and departments are feeling collectively.
And when I look at the last blue bullet, the understand service impacts on community members' daily lives, that informs the other bullet, which, which also for me puts the onus on us to make sure that that public communication is really robust. So that, so that we, we learn what we didn't know before about impact on our community members' daily lives. That, I think that's, that's where I'm going to be focused.
Can we put, put that on the list of things to come back to at the January roundtable as well? So we have more of a communication strategy, not only for our workforce, but also for our community. Because as you highlight, we're in the people-serving business, it's our job. You know, and, and our agency is a collection of people serving other people. And so yes, there, there are impacts.
We will add that and I'll make sure to lift that up at the end of today's presentation to what comes in January.
But I do want to say, I've, I've shared my angst, so to speak. But I'm really pleased that we've written these things down. And so thank you for that. Thank you collectively for, for getting that into our principles. So that when we answer the question about why we're doing what we're doing in, you know, come next June, we are, you know, we can refer back to this, say, this is, this is what we said and this is the process that we went through.
Were you about to say something? Some of what, and this may come up with regard to next steps ahead, but as I internalize mandated services and even, I imagine that we might have struggle even in, in delivering to all of those. So part of what I'm really hoping that Ms. Angie, between your team and Ms. Duke Driesen, the legal team, is what sort of risk does that involve? Would we have potential lawsuits from the state? Would there be, do we have the opportunity to rework some grant commitments, for example, with the state? Because we simply can't do the work? Or can we move out the timeline, spread that work out over a longer period of time? I think we've already done that already, so also if we're not able to serve a particular area, what risk does that have? If any, there may not be risk to other service areas. I know I'm asking a lot of questions and I know that you can't have analysis paralysis, right? So it's okay to tell me we just can't get to those questions.
Those questions will be part of our internal process and not specifically to the mandated question, but I'm going to give you one example that Assistant County Administrators, Marty Kyle and Erin Calvert are already convening. We know that there's, if you make a cut in public safety and justice, there may be an impact over in HHS. And so how we work through this process as a one-Washington County team, I just, I extend gratitude to the ACAs as well as department directors because they're continuing to work together and understand that there can be systemic kind of impact. So I'm actually adding on to what you say, you said. And yes, we will be working with county council because in addition to not meeting state mandates, some of the options of services could be in some areas, rolling back certain services to the state. So departments will be going through that analysis and what can be feasible and even potentially identifying what may not be done, completed this year, but could be part of a longer-term strategy. And I want to connect that to Commissioner Rogers, your point of what does the future hold to? Because this is just a one-year challenge.
Which, which also underscores the point that I've asked for staff to put more explanation into the budget document. And you taught us with the last budget cycle, how there are two different tools that go together in terms of putting together excuse me, the proposed budget document. I thank you all in advance for the work you're going to be putting in to help us and our budget committee colleagues and the public understand what these choices are all about and what, what we're continuing to provide, right? Yeah, we're talking about cuts, but there's still a lot of good service that will be done. And we need to cover that too, as well as the presentations. Your excellent presentations, the words you put on the slides as well as what you articulate. As well as what you articulate.
Yeah, to the budget book. And we can provide a summary and I can add that to the January ninth meeting. Of what to expect for the budget document. I have learned I can't write and talk at the same time, so I'm going to stop writing. So I just want to give a shout out to Anne Ober, Assistant County Administrator, Brenda Bartlett. Uh, Staff Assistant, Philip Bransford, Communications Officer, and also Christine Thornhill from the budget team. Who have been actively working on kind of what, how do we help give departments some of that guidance? Cause you are absolutely right. While we are in a cuts, we have to remember, we are delivering amazing services to the community each and every day. And so the document, budget documents, I always think of, they're, they're really one of the most important policy documents for your board. And to tell a story is important. Recently, um, at least within the last few months, I had a conversation with. A CBO leader within the region. And the CBO leader, um, three years ago had said, was really frustrated. Because could not see within our budget document, um, how dollars were being invested. And just in the conversation had shared appreciation for the continued evolution. And has been seeing the incremental improvements in our process. Um, and so we, we are, you know, a learning organization and we are getting there.
What services you are delivering is just as important as what you're going to need to stop. Anything else commissioners on the budget principles at this time?
I just want to register, I have a, I have a concern. I'm sorry that I know Nafisa cannot be with us today. And I hope that we have a plan to make sure that she's, she has the opportunity. Be aware of this robust conversation. Because it's going to be hard for all of us. And I just want to make sure that, that she has the, the. The sense that we get in this meeting today.
Uh, that is already a motion. Shall I move on to priorities? Okay, so here we have some combinations, so I'll do my best to walk through this. So the fiscal year twenty-six budget, um, priorities is focus on a financial plan. Um, and that is modified language to address immediate and long-term budget issues. The next bullet point, we actually combined a few bullets because we thought it may fit better in, in one bullet point. Operational, operationalized design the future in one Washington County, including improving the major systems of government. Such as capital improvement, planning, finance, I, IT and human resources. We did, um, take out strategic review and planning because that is something we're operationalizing. And from a staff level, we didn't feel we needed to have that language. And your board has adopted the strategic plan update. We continue to have on plan and for and respond to emergencies and disasters, including those caused by climate change. Support a connected multimodal system in partnership with the state, cities and region. So modify that language to really highlight that we don't do transportation in a vacuum or just by the county. A new bullet point is value and retain our employees as we build to a fiscally sustainable organization. And then I'm going to keep going and we can go to this line. Continue to spend down ARPA funds. And then we included December twenty-twenty-six as that spend down date. Partner with state and community to protect public and behavioral health. Behavioral health was added. Partner with state and region to develop, build and manage affordable housing and address homelessness. So what we wanted to highlight here is the full cycle, it's not just construction, it's not just management, it's the full, full cycle.
And it's the full partnership.
Next bullet is the deliver public safety and justice services in a way that builds community trust. Proposals for new or expanded services must include new revenue, that's a continued priority. There's three priorities that your board had some discussion in your last year's roundtable. So we included those in this version. Prioritize countywide revenue on countywide services. So it's just adding that into this budget priority, which also connects to your strategic plan update. Prioritize revenue on city, on county, excuse me, prioritize revenue on county-states shared services. And the last is address the budget requirements to deliver mandated services such as juvenile detention bed shortage. Jail staff hiring challenges, et cetera, et cetera.
Could you explain the second to the last bullet for me? Prioritize revenue on county-state shared services.
So there's, there are services that were required to deliver that are in state and state and county. Shared, and so that connects to the mandated services. So that could be, it could be interpreted as a duplicate.
Yeah, that's, that's why I was asking.
So Chair, I'll turn it to you for a board discussion.
Okay, board members, any thoughts on these board priorities?
My only comment is on slide twelve. Second to the bottom. Support connected multimodal. Since your meeting with Steve Palmer and you're doing a lot of federal outreach. Is there a reason you didn't include partnering with federal partners as well?
There wasn't a reason, we can add federal.
Yeah, idea. If you're going to have a federal agenda, you should include. Is Steve gone now?
Yeah, yeah, we have a.
Oh my goodness.
And David has moved up and on, and so we have new fans.
David's not there either. Oh my goodness, a lot of changes, okay.
I'm really comfortable with this. Yep, thank you for that explanation on the second slide.
So next steps and request for direction. Um, so as your board is, is aware and we've reviewed today, we have made significant progress. And we need to continue to make progress this year. And for me to be able to produce a balanced proposed budget. I am suggesting that the board consider providing the county administrator direction for cut scenarios. From ten, thirteen and seventeen percent across departments. All departments, just as they have been required in the past, would be required to present these cut scenarios. In addition to that, to our fiscal reality, we will need to continue to examine. Our approach to services going forward, which includes mandated services. Chair, I want to connect that bullet point to your comments of exploring if we need to continue them, such as what is the risk? Or if those services could be delivered by the state, for example, or another entity. Our quality of service standards in some areas may go from a gold to a bronze. Um, and that's something that we may take pride in, but we do need to accept the reality of the reductions that we need to make. Uh, examining, eliminating services and programs. We are beyond the point of asking staff to do more with less. Um, and we cannot risk that across Washington County. All revenue alternatives should be explored, including new or increased taxes and fees. As part of this proposed budget. Questions?
Yes. It's not so much a question as a reaction. Having looked at the budget priorities and then the next steps. Because we've given direction around, for example, the purse pickup. And planning that into this proposed budget, you know. To the degree that it may not all happen in one year versus spread out, I can't remember those details. But there's something about, uh, maybe I'm just not seeing it clearly enough. About investing in our workforce. Retaining retention includes training, right? And, uh, I'm missing where that is. In the principles and priorities. You're being clear, we're not going to be doing more with less. And we're going to continue pushing back on the state or the feds. Expecting us to do more with the same or less. We are going to have to reduce some services. And we're going to be in the process together, learning what those are. And that may include reducing some headcount. Which is, hurts my heart. Because we do have really excellent public service employees. I'm really, so these are big numbers, right?
They are, can I make a suggestion? And I had taken us back to slide twelve. So I would refer to the last bullet point on the slide and include, and this was just a quick. Quick editorial change to the, the last bullet point to add value and retain. Including training opportunities for employees as we build financially sustainable organization.
Yeah, because gone are days where we can freeze a little bit here, reduce training and travel a little bit here. Materials and services there, a little bit here. And for me, it was really helpful to have this recent history of the last four years. Uh, because you've all gone through a lot of examination and problem solving over these last four years. Uh, as we've discovered new things. Uh, and have been trying to respond to the increased requirements from the state. The feds and our own desire to serve the community. And so now we're having to do a lot of rightsizing. Which in some ways is a difficult word for me to embrace. Because right to what? It certainly doesn't feel good to reduce, so what is right about that? But it's right from the standpoint of we have to be financially sustainable. And have the workforce, the valued workforce to do that. So spending the time on that last bullet was helpful to me. Seeing those four-year charts, I will, I just need to get it out. That since we went from twenty-five million to ten million. I was stunned with our having a twenty million dollar gap this year. I don't know what you all expected, but I was really hoping it would be in the single digits. If we had one, but because of well-explained cost increases. Well-explained the retirement of the two thousand and five SIP. And going over to the property tax rolls for other. Taxing districts affected by that SIP, it's been an upside for them. For us, not so much. There's still property tax rules, but not enough off-site, the, the fees and loss of fees. So, but there was no way for that to be quantified, which is what we got out of the last roundtable. We knew there would be an adjustment, but that information needed to be retained. With proper disclosure, so, um, yep, it's an adjustment. So ten, thirteen and seventeen are still big numbers. Uh, and it's going, it's going to be quite the differential equation. A lot of multi variables, uh, a little bit in this department, a little bit in that program. Bidding a due to a due, can't quite get that word across my tongue. And it's going to be hard, but we're going to do it together, we're going to do it successfully together.
So while, while I look at this, it all makes sense, it's whole. I will ask a question about. How do we reflect our prioritization for recruitments in understaffed areas? That, and I, I'm thinking about the jail, for example. So as we, as we put this statement out there, I'm a little worried that we, that's not reflected there. Do you?
Yeah, I would reflect back to the priorities. It's important to remember, this next step does not occur in direction, does not occur without. Understanding the principles and priorities. So under the budget priorities, address known budget requirements to deliver mandated services. Such as juvenile detention bed, jail staff hiring, challenges, et cetera.
Okay, thank you, I, I wasn't focused on that, but I was concerned about it.
This is, this is a good time to ask questions because we need to see it as a whole. The principles, the priorities, they go together. And it's the large context, not just any one bullet by itself. So natural human reaction, good question, and helps all of us.
So I'm questioning why the ten, thirteen and seventeen. Flip back to slide nine, where you talk about a twenty million dollar gap. So we have two hundred and ninety-three million dollars of projected revenues. The delta there is twenty million dollars. That's not ten nor thirteen nor seventeen.
So let, I'm, here's the why, Commissioner Willie. Um, and I'm going to go back to the four, seven and ten exercise and one of the learnings that I had. As we know, the jail is a mandated service. The jail, um, any cuts that we make to the jail really impact a direct pod. So at that point in time, I had the learning of four percent reduction to the jail would mean that. That one pod would need to be closed. I don't know if that still equates to today's math, but I'm just going back to that point in time. We are mandated to deliver, to deliver jail services, mandated, no questions about that. So I may not, in the ten, thirteen and seventeen percent, I may still deliver to your board. A proposed budget that a area, a service could still be held flat. Because of mandated requirements. But I need to understand from these scenarios, what, what's the, what are the options of costing? Because there's going to be ones that then need to get up to that seventeen percent to be able to hold another area flat. With all that said, going into this, going into this budget, I'm giving the jail as an example. But I want to underscore, every, every department is required to go through all the scenarios. We can't do across the board cut, like it just, it doesn't work that way.
Okay, no, I get that, I understand that, okay.
But it also may, correct me if I'm wrong. It may also mean that from one area of a department to another, which rolls up to a department. This is not, you confirm that this is not saying every department is going to. Have a proposed budget that is a minimum of a ten percent cut.
No, it's not, this is just saying that they must produce the scenarios.
For the problem solving that you need to go to in order to give us that.
Correct.
Balanced proposed budget, thank you.
And we need that for us and the public needs to see that exercise as well, I think.
Well, and that's where I like to use the jail example, because that exercise was so helpful for me to connect. Jail operations to budget and that service, what, what's the cost of delivering service?
So I think we're going to have to come back to what Commissioner Triste is asking for. Because we have never shown the board or the public that process. What, what we get is the proposed budget and the explanation of how the proposed budget was provided. But we've not seen what the scenarios look like, we see the result outcome. So you're asking for something that would be a first time ever. So I think Ms. Angie is going to have to reflect upon what you're asking and for us to come back to to give complete board direction in terms of what are we expecting communication-wise? Both for our workforce as well as for the public and ourselves.
Let me clarify what I was asking, because I, I didn't expect all the detail behind it. Right now, just in this discussion, it's public information that we're going through the process. And I think that that's an important piece, the process, not necessarily the detail behind it.
So once again, I think we're going to have to reflect upon the public process because we had a comms strategy for last year. What is it that you want to see different? We, we can't just say, please do something different. We have to ask and articulate what needs are, expectations are, and problem solve that with Ms. Angie in a way that the organization can actually help us deliver on. See, is reasonable?
Yes, yeah, I'm nodding my head. I'm sorry, I'm not talking, yes.
And it may be something we have to come back to, not just in January, but our February roundtable.
And I'm reflecting a little bit on what you said, what you said earlier about the CBO discussion.
Yeah, so I will share with your board, yesterday we met with our our department directors and shared this PowerPoint prior to sharing it with the board. Um we're now having the discussion, of course, um together. Um I do anticipate sending a all-employee email tomorrow. Um tomorrow also marks our internal budget kickoff, where we open the budget for departments um to start doing their work. So just from, since you raised comms, I just want to highlight what's happening this week.
And I know I attended the employee budget presentations. Uh and I encourage commissioners to do that. I think it was meaningful to employees to see at least one member of the board there. And I know you have more slides.
Okay, so now, uh moving forward, so upcoming uh roundtable discussion.
Take some more comments on that slide, that last slide.
You were holding back on us.
No, no, I wasn't. I just didn't know when you were going to call for that. Couple of real quick comments and then one suggestion. Uh my quick comments are that I appreciate the maturity of of talking about this as a elongated process in terms of it's not going to be solved in one year. It's it's a multi-year. We are mature and recognizing the problem. This is a public business, but like a private business, nothing, it's like hydraulics are moving up and down and they're moving differently for different business, uh businesses, which are huge equities departments. So that's why the pistons are different. That's why you have to have anywhere from zero to seventeen percent. And then I I get that. So I I wanted to say, I appreciate that message is absolutely correct. I I I don't think the board's going to be out of this in twenty-five, twenty-six. I think it's going to be twenty-six, seven, twenty-seven, eight. I I really believe it. My one suggestion is, in that first sentence and and this, I've seen it around and it's probably the thing that I've seen more jurisdictions have problems with. And and I'll tell you why real quickly. To produce a balanced proposed budget. State law, okay, easy thing to say. Here's the problem. That that means that all resources available to balance your budget. And there are going to be some who argue that you don't need a thirty-million-dollar reserve. Spend it all, because you can do that under state law. So aren't you saying to produce a balanced proposed budget while maintaining reserves? That's what you're really doing. Because if you don't, and I know that sounds like a little geeky thing I'm saying, will be some who will propose. You don't have a budget problem if you take your, but go back to your slide nine or whatever it is. You take all of your reserves and spend them out. You will have a budget problem. It's just, it'll be a couple of years out. So I think you're trying to maintain your policies and I've seen that argument in tons of jurisdictions. I can tell you, I've heard it around this organization as well. Well, let's just spend our reserves down. We won't have this issue. That's, makes it sound good, but it's a very foolish thing to do, very.
So that's, thank you for that, Commissioner Rogers, and that's the intent behind bullet point one on slide um two, is we cannot lose sight in one fiscal year of the long-term issues. And and using uh reserves for ongoing operations just kicks the can further and actually compounds the issue. So that's actually a addressed within that bullet point.
What do you think in your next steps where you say produce a balanced budget, a balanced proposed budget, maintaining reserve balances? Then you go on. I I'm just suggesting, you don't have to do that, but it 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 tells people that you are going to take your money, those reserves and maintain them. Because I agree, the twenty-six, seven problem is going to be huge if you spend those.
This, I think, goes also to frequently ask questions and our staff has done. Oh, welcome back, Commissioner Five. We're thrilled to see you.
I can sit over there.
See, in in being supportive, we wanted you to do right for you and your family.
I appreciate you all understanding. Back everything is fine.
Great.
Stay at home.
Good. Uh wow. Who took my breath away? So what I was trying to get at is the frequently asked question. I think that's something we should speak to. Because it's important. Carry the level of unfunded liabilities that we used to have. We know the result of that, right? Four critical facilities, for example. I was having a lot of sleepless nights trying to figure out, okay, how would we find bed space for over three hundred to four hundred adults in custody? If the big red U hit the jail, right? Uninhabitable. Similarly with the other three facilities. So the organization, the board, as Ms. Angie reflected earlier in the presentation, has done a really good job with discovery, with problem solving, with addressing needs. And you're right, we'll keep at it and we'll continue to make sure that between issuing property, the start of the fiscal year and receiving property tax revenue, that we can continue to uh issue paychecks so that paychecks don't bounce, so that our revenue bonds don't default and that we continue to have a county in good financial positioning so that we can use various fiscal tools to help us achieve the needs both for the immediate and the long term. Alrighty.
So this is a review. We are coming to the end of today's discussion.
Excuse me, I'm so sorry. Commissioner Five. I would not be at all surprised if you had had the opportunity ahead of the meeting to look at the principles and the priorities. We've had a bit of discussion in internalizing, as presented, the draft, working draft of these budget principles and priorities. And that discussion really helped us internalize the the value of different statements and the improvements and to ask clarifying questions. Before we move on, is there anything that you had wanted to bring forward on the principles or priorities, so we just don't leave you behind?
Chair Haren, and I appreciate you, um I appreciate you saying that and so far, no. Catch up and Tanya and I had a good discussion yesterday relating to the budget.
Great.
I'll check in.
Okay, thank you so much.
That's, that's great. Uh we all need to be on the same page. Um so speaking of pages, um we're on on slide fifteen now. So we're just narrowing down today's conversation. Uh January ninth, what's on your slide is a firm principles, priorities and budget discussion. What I've heard today is two additional items that would come on the January ninth um roundtable. Number one, a discussion on communication strategy. And number two, an outline of of this year's budget document and what will be changing from from a narrative or content perspective. So those two items are not listed here, but that's what I captured from today's conversation. Um additional, um and uh this was uh my miss. It is on on the attachment with the proposed principles, priorities, but we didn't make it on the slide. Is on January twenty-four, twenty-first, at your board meeting, on consent calendar. We would then be your board's approval of the budget principles and priorities to memorialize that. Great. Um and these are slides that you've seen before, but just to carry it through for your budget calendar um is this upcoming budget calendar based on your discussion for communication strategy um in January, this could be amended at that point in time. Any further questions?
I have a question. Be real tough on you. Know that. What, uh what resources do you need from the board? Help you personally sustain what's going to be a very difficult period of time.
Um so I would ask the board to continue to be in constant communication with me if you have questions or concerns um early and not hold those till the end. I think that's number one. Um number two, I am, I appreciate you focusing on me, Commissioner Rogers. However, I think you know me well enough that I don't do, I would, I'm going to also say um this is not just me, but we have twenty-four hundred employees that do amazing work here in Washington County. And so just having the understanding that this is very stressful on departments and all, all of our, our employees are passionate about delivering uh Washington County services. As we come out of this budget year, I think uh depending on the proposed budget, adopted budget, we all will need to land on what that means for our expectations. And that means for me, even as a county administrator, as we uh look at services or service levels, that we have to make sure that we are asked are aligned with the available resources that we have. At the same time, being responsive to the community, so it's ever-changing cycle. Thank you for that.
Other board members, questions or thoughts? I'll step in and prime the pop some more about that. For the budget committee members, uh I'm looking back at my text. Pradna Patel wants to continue serving on the budget committee. So she talked about what she learned, so she and I had had talked. And I shared the roundtable packet from November. Can you remember what month that is anymore? Uh so one of the things uh that I recall hearing from budget committee member Melissa Laird as well is how can we bring budget committee members along uh earlier than the training session we have in April? So that's one thing that we might consider is how we can help them, have a session with them just as we do with employees around the um budget principles, priorities and the direction that we support uh giving to the CAO. Um and to hear their questions about what the process is. So that might be something uh to come back with uh the January roundtable.
Staff will do some work on that and some thinking and provide a proposal on the holistic comms strategy.
I, are, that, is the recruitment period for budget committee members open already? It may or may not be. What my true question is, how about our, it's not yet? Okay, so um I love budgets, right? It's where the money meets the road. Uh and you learn a lot about our portfolio and our staff does a great job of bringing budget to life. So uh you know, there's an ask there for us to help recruit people who are just interested, interested in learning. They don't necessarily have to want to be a government geek. Heavens, no. But this is their home too. And uh it's, it's really for a set time period. April and May is wicked intense. Uh but they can make a true difference and learn a lot along the way. So um who knows, we make it some gluten-free goodies as a result, like we did last year.
Yeah, if I could comment too, I think following along with the chair was just talking about our budget committee members. I've heard the same thing from two of them. I think slide nine is a great start to be able to present to them. And then if we could take that and break the expenditures down, I mean, they'd probably want to see a little bit more about revenues, but that, that already does a good job. It talks about property taxes. It talks about transfer from step. I don't know if they'd understand that, but back to the matter is, I think it's on the expense side that we're we're hitting the biggest reductions, obviously. So if we could take that three hundred and twelve million dollars and then break it down into, we've got three large departments. You know, public safety, A U T and Health and Human Services. How does that impact? So that we could see, you're talking about uh ten thirteen and seventeen, you're talking about it's not going to be across the board. So what does it mean if we would only reduce public safety by two percent? How much does the others have to carry? And they'd be able to understand why it's a ten thirteen and seventeen, which is a huge swing as to how that hits those various departments unequally, okay? And then if there's a fourth column or if there's a fifth column, however you would want to do that, and I don't want to create a bunch of work. But I think our budget committee members, as well as us, need to understand that it's just not one big number and we're reducing it by twenty million dollars. We got to break it down into segments of impact, I think, by department.
And along those lines, I think this is the first time we've seen the impact of a SIP situation si- in in the past five years. So I think we need to pay special attention to that education as well.
Yeah, but what we went through at the November, you know, it's, it's, some parts of it are counterintuitive.
Exactly.
The tax revenue did go up, but it went up more for other districts versus for Washington County overall. So um I, I want you and our comms experts to have the opportunity to put your heads together because it sounds more to me like some kind of forum in, in addition to your already best practices of with uh the employees particularly uh and what we do with mayors and city managers and service district folks. And then once you have a proposed budget with CBOs and other partners, something in an April-May timeframe in terms of what does it really take for a CAO to problem solve with the agency to come up with a balanced proposed budget? Right? Part of that is what you've been doing with us for now three months. Right? And laying that groundwork, the forecasts, the context. Uh but these kinds of mechanics that Commissioner Willie summarized and looking at all the different variables. So please think about it. Who knows, some of it may be some of those creative videos that you've done in the past uh versus a uh having a uh special interim budget committee meeting that is a public forum, kind of like Kind of like there's the budget committee audience. But it's also a countywide town hall that we could host in the auditorium as well as have on Zoom for all to learn from. And we've had some town halls where we've had online Q and A too, or just have the Q and A from the budget committee members and collect community Q and A for that frequently asked questions during the actual budget committee process.
And I do have the actual dates of the budget committee recruitment. It will open on January 7th and it will close on February 18th. So please refer any.
How many positions do we have open or up for renewal?
We will get three, we believe three.
Okay.
It, I can't remember, different committees have different tenures. Is the budget committee just for one year or multiple years?
There were a couple folks that were put in for one short last year, but others are.
So for the sake of the broadcast, we have multi, we have some set of multi-year positions. Well, they're all multi-year positions, but they're staggered in terms of the years. So there are some that are open for reappointment or totally open out of the full set of our three different budget committees. Washington County and Service District for Roads is the first budget committee, then ESPD and URMD for the second. So folks who live in the urban unincorporated areas and then the very small North Bethany Service District for Roads. Any other questions? Thank you. Yep. Thank you in advance for all the great work you're going to be doing as well as the service delivery you do each and every day.
So can I just mention, you did hear from Brenda Bartlett, whose current role with the county is staff assistant. Brenda is going to be transitioning into a new position and we're recruiting staff assistant position. Brenda will be the senior management analyst, helping support a one Washington County approach to our budget process and is already jumping in. Can I say with four? Four feet because she's all, instead of two. But she's already just really diving in and really helping be, I'm going to call it a connective tissue with all of us, your board, staff, departments and just, this is also a growth opportunity for Brenda. She is going to be focusing on her project management certificate as she continues to grow in her career. And so I just want to say thank you to Brenda and she hates being the spotlight, so I know she wants me to stop talking now.
Oh, but let's keep going.
But she wants you to, she wants you to stop talking about her.
Let's keep going. I want to see when she drops the sunglasses. Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much. So our next roundtable, January 9th, as you saw in the roundtable sheet, is chock full of topics. So we have a training, a session in the morning, nine to 12. We'll have just a half an hour break. Then we'll go over board topics, including committee assignments, talking about a possible approach in 2025 for state of the county, other BCC comms stuff like town hall. Then we have four hours of work, the CAO management quarterly report walkthrough and then more budget planning for the remainder of the afternoon. So related to that, I had been fielding some different questions about committee assignments. So you've seen, I just have a handout for you and I have the, and if somebody can help me, the 10 required copies for the public. But I put together. This is in your packet now because a board clerk, Kevin Moss, is that good to update things quickly? He responded last night. I mean, he didn't receive it until 6:30 PM. So I, taking learnings from prior years, I put together just a starting point for our preparations for discussion in January on committees. So the last two pages are reviews of committee assignments for the current year. This upcoming year, there are two new opportunities. The Metro Waste Advisory Committee and the Clean Water Services Audit Committee. So as I just explained, this is merely a starting point. But I wanted to highlight those committees that are somewhat geographically based and District Four has the most of those. In addition to being our physically largest district. And then some really have a key role in terms of distributions. So you will see on the first table, lots of question marks, right? Are you still interested? Are you maybe interested in something else? And in having a new member onboard, it just seemed logical to me that there be some conversation where across two districts the, the opportunity may apply. So this is merely a vehicle for conversation. And out of that, you know, I just put a stake in the ground that I would really, really like to continue on with the AOC stuff and the SHS stuff. But that is just what I'd like to start with and I should have put it in italics like everything else. But there were ones that seemed natural for continuity, partially because they're external versus internal. So don't read anything more into this than starting point. So there you have it. It just seemed natural to put something out to help us figure out or have a very productive, since time is so short in that January meeting. And I've put off Metro as long as possible on the Metro Waste Advisory Committee. I told them that we were told Metro Council President Peterson, we'd have an answer by the middle of January. So there you have it. So that is just the purpose of that. We can certainly, we do have time before the lunch break. Should you have any questions or comments since we're here in a public meeting? And Commissioner-elect Snyder is here. I would urge you to participate in advance of the January meeting. Gray on alternate means there aren't the alternate.
I like my low. It's, it's really good.
Oh, after 40 years of being a commissioner, you're, what are you going to do with your Tuesdays?
I have one too.
What are you gonna do? Anything else from anyone? If not, we can take a longer lunch break and we'll be reconvening in training starting at 1 o'clock.
I'm going over to the wick.
Okey dokey. Great. All right. That's it for this morning then. Thanks, everybody.